Committing the order with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the March 21 Fisher City Council meeting. I think we have, don't have, we do have a couple announcements this evening. Todd, would you take the first announcement for us, please?
Yes, President. National Work Zone Awareness Week, April 11, 2016 will mark the start of National Work Zone Awareness Week. This is the largest, most innovative statewide work zone safety campaign in the history of Indiana. Look for signs on interstate highways, construction vehicles, and in newspaper ads. Don't be that driver. Work on safety. Get home safely every day. You can stay safe by slowing down, not tailgating, and avoiding distractions. Limit talking on cellphones in work zones and never text while driving.
Thank you, Todd. Selena, do you have an announcement for us?
Keep Fishers Beautiful will run on Saturday, April 16 with countless ways for volunteers of all ages to make a difference. Individuals or groups interested in helping beautify our community are encouraged to contact Dan Domsick today at D-O-M-S-I-C-D at fishers.in.us.
Thank you, Selena. Any other announcements before we get going on our agenda this evening? If not, we have some presentation, some service awards.
Thank you. Tonight, we're celebrating a special event. We've got four members of our fire department that have served more than 25 years, so we're celebrating that. And I'd like to ask each one to come up and tell you a little bit about each in their family. First is Battalion Chief Steve White. Battalion Chief Steve White is a resident of Fishers. He's a member of the Holy Spirit of Geist Church. He has two daughters serving in the military. He is also the Fire Chief of Jackson Township Fire Department here in Hamilton County. He is an active instructor with Fire Engineering Magazine, and he's been a leader in technical rescue in Hamilton County for the past twenty-five years. Congratulations to you. Firefighter Greg Shealy is also a resident of Fishers. He is a boat operator, a dive rescue specialist, a collapsed rescue technician, and an engineer, which means he gets to drive the big red fire trucks. He has three kids, a grandchild, and two are serving in the U.S. United States Marine Corps. Greg, service has been for 25 years and represents leadership at our firefighter level. Thank you, Greg. Jim is one of our smaller firefighters. Jim Alderman is a division chief, and he is also a logistics section chief. And for those of you that don't know what that means, he manages everything from Band-Aids to fuel to fire trucks. And he is smarter than our average firefighter because he is also our IT specialist. So when the fire chief doesn't know how to work his computer or his phone, Jim is always there to help him. That's why his office is next to mine. Jim's son Tyler plays basketball for William Penn University. Congratulations, Kevin. And last but not least, our administrative planning section chief Mark Albert. Mark is a division chief and his area of responsibility is administrative and planning. He plans everything on the fire department, from the budget to deployment of teams. He also handles a lot of our administrative duties, SOGs, personnel records. Mark is a resident of Fishers. He is a mason, a shriner, a rotarian. He gets the credit for modernizing our emergency management administration offices of Fishers and for modernizing our budget. And Mark's wife Kelly is a retired firefighter from Fishers, and now she works for IMS. These four individuals represent more than 100 years of leadership on our fire department at all levels, firefighter, division chief, battalion chief, and we're grateful for your service. One more round of applause.
John, if I could, just say one quick compliment to Chief Arusa and his staff. We, last week, I don't remember which day it was, Chris, I don't know if you recall, but we all, our entire department head team, started the day off at 6:30 in the morning with a tornado drill that also had a terrorist action involved, which it was really an extraordinary opportunity for our team to come together and learn how we can better serve our community. Hopefully, we never have to, but if we did in its worst hour, and how best to communicate and how best to effectively manage those incidents. And Chief Arusa and his team spearheaded that exercise, and it was definitely an eye-opening experience, and we learned a lot as a team. So we're really grateful for the leadership in emergency management that they provide on a daily and annual basis.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you again, gentlemen, for all the great things you've done for our community. We're proud to be a part of it. Thank you. Moving on, we do have a couple of proclamations this evening. Our first proclamation is on Disability Awareness Month. And actually, Cecilia, Councilor Colboll has done a lot with disability awareness, and she's been a real active proponent of this. And I would like, Cecilia, if you wouldn't mind, just saying a few words about some things that we did recently and some outreach you had. So we'd like to have you share with us what you've been up to.
Okay. So we had our rally last week to kick off Disability Awareness Month here in Fishers, and we had Josh Blyle come and speak. And if you've never heard him speak, he's an amazing person and a spokesperson for people with disabilities. He lost his two legs in Iraq, and he now does motivational speaking. And one of the things that he really talked about was just masking a lot of questions. You know, he said that what happens is I think people get nervous and they get embarrassed to ask some questions of people with disabilities. But by asking questions, we learn more about the disability and what we can do to better accommodate people with disabilities or to better understand what they're going through. So we have an ADA task force here in Fishers, and we are now going to be focusing on bringing in more community engagement and different focus groups, people with various disabilities, to see what are their needs, what are their concerns, and some of the ideas that we can maybe bridge some gaps and work together with our partners, whether it be education or businesses, and to better serve the disability community. So we're really excited about the opportunity, and we're going to be putting something out in the near future for our next ADA roundtable.
Thank you very much. We won't go through and read the entire proclamation, but certainly appreciate your hard work and also the awareness that we're creating regarding this. The next proclamation is Farm Workers Awareness Week. And Pete, if you want to, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that or not, as I know you'd had someone who had...
Nothing really to add, John. Again, I mean, as, you know, as we sit here on council, we get a number of people kind of come forward and ask us to do things. I thought it was a reasonable thing to do since we have Fishers located right here in the middle of state, and the state is very resilient upon agriculture as well as manufacturing. So I thought it was reasonable, and I gave it to staff, and they obviously got it on our agenda. So I mean, I can read the proclamation if they'd like. City of Fisher City Council proclamation, whereas Indiana's agribusiness employs over 30,000 people year-round who work seasonally as migrant farmworkers, and whereas the city of Fishers recognizes that farmworkers are key performers in safety, security, sustainability of our food supply, and whereas labor from Indiana's farmworkers contributes billions of dollars annually to the state's economy, and agriculture continues to be one of the principal industries in surrounding communities, and whereas the city of Fishers honors all those who plant, cultivate, harvest, and process agricultural products, and whereas the city of Fishers is currently taking steps to educate and empower residents to embark on their own farming efforts through initiatives like community guarding programming, and whereas March 31 is the birthday of Cesar Chavez, whose dedication to nonviolent organization for just ways, safe labor conditions, dignity for women, men, and children who toil in the fields moved him to lead a nationwide peaceful struggle for the farmworker justice that continues today. And then obviously, therefore, our Mayor Scott Fadness, along with the Honorable City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of March 29th to April 1st to be Farm Workers Awareness Week.
Thank you, Pete. Moving on to committee reports, Finance Committee report, Eric.
Thank you, John. The Finance Committee met last week. We discussed a number of issues, but two of them that I want to highlight tonight are, from a legislative perspective, the Indiana General Assembly recently passed a law that will allow us to collect $9.5 million for transportation and infrastructure improvement. They will be receiving those dollars this summer. Some conditions, of course, around that money. Seventy-five percent will be required to be spent on the roads and infrastructures, 25 percent at our discretion. I think through the deliberation and conversation in the committee meeting, we felt it was prudent to thoughtfully and carefully consider how we spend those monies. I think from a perspective of just sheer economics, that several localities will be getting an influx of cash, and it would be wise for us just to sit and thinkfully and thoughtfully consider that. Number, second thing, as Oscar shared with us, that the special census is moving forward. Census employees will be onsite on April 12. They'll be hosted in the Delaware Township Building through the summer, and we have a deadline of 12:31 to get all the needed information to the state. That's it.
Thank you very much, Eric. Do I motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Pete, do I have a second? Second by Todd. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Moving right along. First item on our agenda is item seven, ordinance 122115B, request to approve a text amendment to Vermillion Plan Unit Development. Good evening, Adam.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Adam Zaklakowski, a planner with the Community Development Department. Item before you tonight is the Vermillion PUD text amendment. If you'll recall, the original intent of this amendment was just to cover aggregate side yard setbacks, and we presented it to you back at your meeting on February 15. At that time, the petitioner, CalAtlantic Homes and Republic Development, wanted to expand the scope of the amendment to include architectural changes as well, as CalAtlantic was getting ready to submit a new product to build that Vermillion. So the item was sent back to the Plan Commission for further consideration with these architectural modifications. So the item went to the Plan Commission, and they reviewed it at their meeting on March 8. They issued a positive recommendation with a voluntary commitment made by the developer and home builder that rear lighting restrictions would be put on new houses that abut a property to the west called the Hendrix property. And that would include no floodlights and semi-cut-off lights on the rear of the homes. So just to go over quickly, an overview of the specifics on this petition. Again, the main impetus for it is that these houses that you see here don't fit nice and neatly into the architectural pallets that were set up in the PUD. So CalAtlantic proposed adding some additional architectural styles, including prairie and American four-square, Italian eight-second empire, and American traditional. And so we looked at those very carefully and felt that each of the detailed elements that were shown in each of the architectural categories still met a good high quality that the city was looking for. Also, as part of this amendment, the procedural language in the PUD was modified a little bit in that if we run into this scenario again in which there are, there's a new product that is of good quality, character, and a high level of architectural detailing, that would go to the PUD committee for review as opposed to having to do another text amendment. As part of the amendment, the home builder will be providing decorative garage doors with windows. That's both in the text and in the exhibit that's provided in the PUD. Also, CalAtlantic Homes would be providing roof overhangs, a minimum of 11 inches deep on 80% of the roofline. And I had already mentioned about the lighting changes that were put into the PUD as well. So with that, that's pretty much a summary of what it is that they're looking to amend. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to address those. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Adam from the council? Is petitioner here tonight would like to add anything?
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, for the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner at the law firm of Fageri Baker Daniels and a resident here of the city of Fishers. I'm representing CalAtlantic and Republic. And from Republic is Mr. Doug Wagner, and from CalAtlantic, Mr. Kenny Windler. We don't have anything else to add other than there was the one neighbor who came to the Plan Commission, asked about the lighting. We showed an example of what the rear lighting was, semi-cut-off, and agreed to do that. And then the staff also asked that be agreed to be included in the covenants and restrictions, which we said we needed to look at to see whether that would be okay to do. And as you hopefully saw in the ordinance that's before you, they did agree to that. And so that would be both in the ordinance as well as in the covenants and restrictions for those lots. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to suspend rules and pass on second reading?
So moved.
Second. Motion by David, second by Pete. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Ayes have it. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item eight and item nine on the agenda have been pulled. We're going to move on to item 10, ordinance 032116B, request to approve a text amendment to Lantern Pines Plan Unit Development to allow automobile service and repairs from readily under land use. First reading tonight. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Kevin Stotts. I'm a planner in the Department of Community Development. The next item on the agenda is a text amendment to the Lantern Pines PUD development. As you can see here on the map, Lantern Pines, outlined in gray, is located on the east side of Lantern Road, on the north side of 96th Street. Lantern Pines PUD ordinance was approved in 1991, and it established the residential land uses on approximately 24 acres on the northern portion of the site, known as the Lantern Pine subdivision. It also established the commercial land uses on approximately 16 acres on the southern portion, known as Lantern Crossing. In 1997, there was an additional text amendment to the Lantern Pines PUD to allow a self-storage facility, which is located just east of the site. The Lantern Pines PUD, generally speaking, allows the C2 commercial uses within this area. However, it does have a statement which prohibits a gas station or auto repair facilities of any kind as a permitted land use. So the request before you tonight would be to approve or to hold first reading for a text amendment to allow automobile service and repair as a permitted land use on the parcel outlined in red. So this would be a site-specific text amendment approval. The building is currently multi-tenant building, so there would need to be some renovations to the building, for instance, to add the overhead doors. As you'll see in the staff report, staff has made some suggestions for council, Plan Commission, and the petitioner to consider as we work through the process. And briefly, those would be to limit the overhead vehicle doors to the south elevation, add some additional landscaping in this area to help screening from the neighbors to the north, also prohibit any outdoor storage, which would include damaged vehicles. And then we'd also like to contemplate and talk to the petitioner about possibly keeping the overhead doors closed during business hours, although I think they would like to continue to talk to staff about that request. So as you can tell, it's a pretty straightforward request. With that, the petitioner and staff is asking that council provide feedback on this item and hold first reading tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, my name is Steve Harden, partner of the law firm of Fageri Baker Daniels, and happy to be here representing Keith Shanklin and his wife Dee in this proposal. We have heard quite a bit over the last few years about being a smart, vibrant entrepreneurial city, and it's a real pleasure of mine to be representing a 19-year-old resident of the city of Fisher. And this is Mr. and Mrs. Franklin, who are pursuing their dream of entrepreneurship. You hopefully saw a little bit of the background of Mr. Shanklin in the materials, but it's a really, he is someone who has a vast background in engineering and project management, is going to bring a lot of energy to this particular project. We're happy to continue to work with the staff. I think if you've been by the site, or if you've walked it, or you take a look at it, you'll understand pretty quickly the challenges that it faces because of what it looks out to. But we've also recognized that it's near a neighborhood. We're going to have a neighborhood meeting before the Plan Commission. I think we're all coming to some of the same conclusions the staff did, that there's probably some better landscaping or screening to really, I think, more of a visual than even a noise issue. Currently, they can look back, as you saw in our materials, they can see through there to see the back end of that cleaners, and it would probably be a lot better for them to be able to do some additional landscaping. So we'll continue to work with the staff and the neighbors on that, and look forward to giving an update at the Plan Commission. But we're happy to be here, starting the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for petitioner or for Kevin?
I would just like to say, Steve, I appreciate you bringing that up in the fourth bullet point on the recommendations because I think you're right. Their landscaping, whether it's fencing or plants or whatever, need to happen in that northwest corner, or northeast corner, excuse me. If anything, like you said, for the activity, but also for the homes across the pond, looking into that area of the facility.
What currently exists there? Is it just grass and then the retention pond? Is there trees or anything there? I can't really tell from this.
There's some... Here, but everything is pretty...
This is not going to come out really well. There are a few trees, but there is not a complete screen. If you stand there or pull back there, you can, really, the main, it's a visual of the back, unfortunately, the back end of the, we've got pictures in, you know, a packet showing the actual photos from standing here to see what the back of this looks like. And so really, it seemed like it could be some enhanced, probably, we're going to propose to the neighbors back there, would they rather see evergreens? We can create probably a solid line, have an arborist look at it. So have an arborist look at it to show if they want evergreens, here's how many you'd plant, where you'd plant them, confirm that with the neighbors if they're good with that or offense.
Or maybe even, I don't know if you have space, even if just a small mound that can elevate the trees a little bit possibly, just something where...
If they have that one back.
Okay.
But yeah, it's going to elevate the option.
Yeah. I mean, there's not a ton of space there, but...
Yeah.
John?
Sure. Rich?
If I may, you know, I know this building's actually struggled with its occupancy over the years, and I can understand from a service standpoint how probably during those hotter months, it may be better or at least preferable to have the doors open. I was going to suggest that, and I don't have as much concern about that because it's perpendicular to Lantern Road, so I think that that will help mitigate. But I might suggest that in addition to the landscaping on that northeast corner, that along the west side there, particularly along the frontage, that gets buffered as well and may allow for screening, but still allows for some identity of the building itself along...
Yeah, good idea. Particularly, yeah, if we look at where the doors are and maybe we'll put that, but allow the signage to still be able to be seen.
Exactly.
Okay, that's a great idea. That's a real good idea. Thank you.
Real quick, I don't have a problem either with the doors since they're on the southern face. The only question I had, which we can look at between now and Plan Commission, is you've got a certain amount of parking now because it's more of an office-type retail use when the old Montessori school was there. But then, when this business were to start, then the parking that would be along the front of the building would obviously turn into pass-throughs for the doors, and then you would be left with the parking just to the right. Did that work? Is there cross-parking between this and the dry cleaners? Because obviously, they have more of a dry-through business, so I just wanted to make sure that it all functioned for the business that would go in there.
Great point. Thank you.
Since Mr. Shanklin's Purdue grad, I'm sure it would be very successful.
Well done.
We'll get past the first round.
You're a Purdue grad, though. You're a Purdue grad, that's right.
Wow, it's going to get personal in here, I think.
Okay, well, as a Ball State grad, I'm going to call for first reading.
We've had first readings. Best of luck to you.
Yeah, best of luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Moving on to our next item on our agenda, item 11, ordinance 032116C, request to approve the Fisher's 2040 Comprehensive Plan. First reading. Good evening, Leah.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Leah McGrath, Deputy Mayor for the city of Fishers. We're excited to be before you today requesting first reading of our draft Fisher's 20 Comprehensive Plan. It's been a long road to get here. Just to recap a bit of it, over the last few years, our staff has been working to just prepare our community for this undertaking. We've had about 1,300 people complete surveys for bikes, pedestrian transportation parks. We've had community meetings with our bike and pedestrian plan. And last August, our steering committee and, or our mayor set up our steering committee and four task force committees that combined met for more than 600 hours last fall. So last December, we had a presentation where all of the committee members came together to share their recommendations in areas of future land use, transportation, roads, and parks and open space. And since that time, our staff has been working diligently to pull all that together into a draft document that you have before you today. This begins really the next phase of public input for us. So you can find this plan at fishers2040.com. If you go, probably the easiest place to go would be to the Process tab, and you can click on the draft plan. There's a link that can open that for you, and information about our upcoming public meetings. So the next step, assuming you approve this on first reading, would be to go to the Plan Commission in April, April 12. And then we have two community meetings planned for open houses where we're going to be listening and sharing more about this draft plan, and hearing input from the community on April 21st at Connor Prairie from 6:00 to 8:00, on May 5 at Cumberland Road Elementary School. I'm sorry, I think that's Brook School Road Elementary School, from 6:00 to 8:00 in the cafeteria, and then back at Plan Commission in May. We're anticipating two hearings there so that we can fully vet this. So looking forward to hearing your comments today. We had a presentation at work session, so I won't take up more time, but certainly look forward to sharing more about this framework for how we can achieve that vision. Steve, I feel like he teed me up for this, for achieving this smart, vibrant, and entrepreneurial community.
Thank you, Leah. Any questions?
No, just a really quick comment. Again, I think that the entire council and certainly the folks that were represented on that initial planning group did a tremendous job. I highly respect the staff for all the work they put in this because it's a tremendous document. I think it's going to go ahead and take us forward by leaps and bounds. I guess my question would be is that, you know, trying to engage the most people we possibly can in the community, maybe I suggest we have cookies or something at the call-out meeting, something. We need to get these people out. Something, I'm not really sure. But food typically brings people out, is what I noticed.
Sure.
So, you know, I don't know. I'm just trying to get more people involved in it because I find it to be highly important as we go forward to continue engaging these people.
Well, and I should say, we also plan to have information at our movie nights in April at the first farmer's market, isn't that first Saturday in May, prior to going back to Plan Commission. So we're hoping to hit people where they are as well. Thank you.
Has there been any engagement to this point, or has it been pretty minor? Anybody asking questions?
Oh, beyond the task force committees and the surveys?
Residents in general?
Well, we've had a few different touch points. Whenever we're out speaking, if I'm meeting with groups, this is one of our talking points. We have the opportunity to talk to people about that. People, I think, are genuinely excited to hear that we have a plan, that we're planning for, especially the transition from moving from a growing community to a stable community by 2040. We had Box City, which was a really unique opportunity. I know some of you had a chance to see that, but we heard quite a bit from the students, the teachers, and the parents during that. the teachers, and the parents during that process as well, so...
I've heard a lot from residents, actually, about it.
Good.
Maybe because their kids were involved, and were more intimately involved in that, but just, I appreciate the residents that were involved, the business leaders that were involved. So it was beyond just, you know, us coming up with the solutions and thinking that's the best for the community, and even high school students that were involved.
That's right.
So I think that brings ownership to the community, and I really encourage residents to come out to those community open houses, be part of the process, engage in this process because this is your city. It's not our city, it's your city, and we want to make sure that the plan for 2040 is the best possible. So I, the staff, great work. I mean, this is, this is a lot of reading, but no, it's outstanding vision for the community, so...
But I'd agree with Todd. I know for Eric's question, Todd and I were on the transportation committee, and we did have some residents that came to most of the meetings and were very engaged.
Yeah.
Other comments?
Just with the agreement, the change of picture, it'll be very successful.
We can do that. My staff agrees with you, so we'll definitely make that happen.
First reading.
We've had first reading. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item, 12, on our agenda, it's request, R032116, request to approve confirmatory resolution of the city of Fishers designate properly, generally known as 8700 North Street, as an economic revitalization area. Good evening, Brandon.
Evening, Mr. President, members of the council. For the record, Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development. Today, with this item, this is the confirmatory resolution for the Brayden parcel, which is going to be 8700 North Street. As you may remember, last month, we brought the Brayden proposal, which was approved unanimously, thirty-five to four to three thousand square foot building, one hundred and sixty-three new jobs to Fishers, twenty-five million dollar payroll over ten years, with a six-point-five mil, a six-point-five million minimum capital investment, with an abatement schedule for roughly five to six years, depending on how they locate that warehouse, which hasn't quite been determined yet, but there's no rush on that aspect. Once they do decide, we'll be sure to update the council on that. But staff would recommend council's approval of the confirmatory resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions relating to the project.
Any questions for Brandon before we have our public hearing?
Brandon, that plat will be recorded first, so the legal will be lot one then, when we transfer title.
What's that, one more time?
That plat will be recorded first, and then we will transfer it as lot one.
Actually, it'll be transferred tonight. The EDC has already preemptively accepted it, and then it will be platted at the plan commission meeting in April. As long as those documents are listed chronologically during closing, it doesn't matter which one comes first, but...
So we'll transfer it meets and bounds, and then plat it. Okay.
Any other questions? At this point, we'll open up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward, please state your name for the record. Seeing that there is no one that's come forward, I will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve R032116.
Second.
I've got a motion by Pete, a second by Todd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Ayes have it.
John, I'm going to abstain, just for the record.
Okay. Rich Block will be abstaining for the record. Thank you, Rich. Moving on to our next item, item 13.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You go ahead.
The next item on your agenda, R032116A, request to approve the confirmatory resolution for Zero Kincaid Drive, which was the Stanley project, authorizing a real property tax abatement. This one was also brought to the council last month and was approved unanimously, just as a refresher. Stanley is an eighty thousand square foot build out in Delaware Park. It is a, it's three hundred and twenty new retained jobs, one hundred and fifty-five new, one hundred and sixty-five retained, sixty-two thousand dollar annual wage, two-hundred million dollar payroll over ten years, with a sixteen million dollar capital investment, a real property abatement over ten years, years one through eight at a hundred percent, year nine and ten at seventy-five percent. The project during this period will also bring in an estimated four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in tax revenue to the city of Fishers. We would ask council approve the confirmatory resolution on this project.
Any questions for Brandon before we open up for public hearing? Thank you. At this point, I'll open up for public hearing. Any wishing to come forward, please state your name for the record. Seeing that there's no one that's come forward, we'll close the public hearing to have a motion approved.
Motion. R032116A.
Motion by Pete, do I have a second? Second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Moving on to item 14. Keep rolling, Brandon.
Well, actually, I'm going to hand 14 and 15 off to Megan, our direct, our assistant director...
Excellent.
...of economic development, as she has a unique knowledge and understanding of this project, so I'll hand it off to the better half of the department.
He's struggling with those words.
Good evening, Megan. Megan, welcome.
Good evening. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Assistant Director of Economic Development for the city of Fishers. Tonight, there are two items for consideration for Republic Services. February 11th, the city announced Republic Services is going to open one of its new three customer service centers in Fishers. They'll be taking approximately sixty-eight thousand square feet in two concourse or 10194 Crosspoint Boulevard, just about two and a half floors there. They anticipate starting, filling that space as of September 2016. Four hundred and twenty-six new employees for Fishers here, with an estimated annual payroll of seventeen point six million dollars. Total investment for them is over thirteen million dollars. For us, though, the eligible property that we can abate is two point seven five million. The city is asking and has proposed a personal property tax abatement of ten years on a traditional scale, which has an estimated value of one hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. Even without that one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, our estimated revenue between the property taxes for that personal property and then the payroll tax specific to Fishers is three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars each year. So, we are asking for that consideration tonight. The confirmatory resolution for designating that property as an economic revitalization area, the declaratory resolution was passed on July 22nd of 2015. And then we're also asking the council to approve the resolution for their statement of benefits.
Any questions for Megan?
Just on item number fifteen, Megan. Our standard callbacks were in that SB one.
So the, because this is such a, considering the size of the abatement, we have, our callback for them is that they have to make the investment within the first two years. Otherwise, the abatement goes away.
Terrific, thank you.
At this point, we have to open up for public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward, please state your name for the record. Since there's no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any other questions? Or we have a mo, can we do a motion to approve items 14 and 15 concurrently?
Can you do them separately for the record?
Yeah.
I knew you were going to say that.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve R032116B.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He's just jealous.
Motion by Todd. Do we have a second by Eric? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Moving on to item 17, request to approve resolution to city official approving Fourth Amendment to the project agreement.
Well done, Megan. Way less monotone than mine usually is, so I'm sure that was a welcome addition. Did we skip 16, Mr. President?
Number 16. Items, we need it, we're doing item 16.
Brayden, yeah. So, to Counselor DeRimer's point, item number 16 is a request to approve the resolution transferring the property, which is generally known as 8700 North Street, to the Fishers Redevelopment Commission. So, we will have plating later on in April, and then, at the appropriate time, almost simultaneously with closing, the property would then be eligible for transfer to the Brayden Business Systems.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve R032116.
Motion by Pete, do I have a second by Cecilia? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay.
Again, I abstain.
Which is abstaining. Thank you, Rich. We've gone to item 17, request to approve resolution to city official approving, whoops, Fourth Amendment to project agreement. Now, we're on to 17, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 17, this is a amendment to the project agreement for the switch. When we originally put together the switch development, there was a minimum taxpayer agreement that was put into place to guard the city against any appeals on appraisals where the appeal amount could come in lower than what we would expect out of revenue for it. And at that time, that number was one hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars annually. The multifamily building and the office building at the switch actually had independent minimums that in sum came to one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. But if one did not meet the minimum and the other one exceeded its tax revenue, the lower amount difference would still have to be paid in those situations. However, when the city brought in Purdue to take in the second floor of the switch building, Purdue as a tax-exempt entity kind of threw off the numbers a little bit. So what this amendment does is the number does not change for the minimum taxpayer agreement. The minimum taxpayer agreement will stay at one hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and forty annually. The difference is the formula, and the formula allows for the office building and the multi-tenant building amounts to be combined in order to reach the one hundred and ninety-nine, nine hundred and forty thousand dollar annual taxpayer agreement. This item has been signed by all of the other parties, including Redevelopment Commission, Town Hall Building Corp., Fishers Redevelopment LR, as well as the council here tonight. And I think after council approves it, the only other entity that would need to approve it is the EDC. So, and I believe that meeting has been set for later on this month, and the amendment will be in effect once fully executed by all parties. Happy to answer any questions related to this item.
Are we worrying about any shortfall, that they're not going to hit that minimum? I think what we did know is we were pretty conservative, weren't we, Scott, when we looked at that stuff?
Yeah, it's, you're testing my memory, but typically what we would do on those, we would look at a traditional assessed value of a building that way, of that stature, and reduce it by like twenty or twenty-five percent.
Right.
And that would be the minimum.
Right.
In this particular case, I think they're merely saying, you know, as part of an economic development strategy, we went and recruited Purdue to go in there and exercise our option to put Purdue in there, which makes a portion of the building no longer taxable, so they're asking for a compromise here, which I don't think we're actually even going to have an issue, but nonetheless, I think this is a fair compromise, given...
Yeah, I'd just like to continue, follow up on what our minimums are, where our net asset values end up when they get there. Nothing today to give me, but let's just track that.
We should have our first, the depot should be the first project...
Right.
...that should be fully online and fully assessed, so we can start to monitor what that looks like, and if it's exceeding the exercise that we went through when we initially did these deals.
Yeah, just nice to know how our modeling went.
Yeah.
It's just another concession for Purdue, I'm afraid.
We had to give them something. I mean, they got nothing to cheer about, so...
We're for, they're trying to keep the division down.
That's right.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Sorry, I got a little out of filter on the agenda here. March 21st, I start seeing double for some reason. Item 18, request to approve agreement to transfer real property buying between the city of Fishers and Sunbeam Development Corporation.
For the record, Scott Fadness, mayor, standing in for Jeff Hill tonight. He had to get home for something, and I think he's going to be up early tomorrow morning managing traffic as we close 96th Street. So, this is a little bit complicated, and I'm going to stay at a high level, but if you have any detailed questions, I'll try my best to answer this. I've been involved with this on some level, but Jeff would probably know the details better than I. When the discussion occurred with IKEA to come to Fishers, one of the key components of that was to ensure that the road that goes by IKEA, which is currently USA Parkway, which if you're familiar, goes between, it's directly west of the Methodist Church and goes south from 116th Street, basically down to 106th Street. That road has traditionally always been a privately held and privately owned road. One of the concerns that IKEA had, and one of the conditions that IKEA had for coming here, was that that would become a public road. So then we entered into almost parallel negotiations, if you will, between the city of Fishers and Sunbeam, and at the same time, the city of Fishers and IKEA. We got the IKEA project done, but we continued to negotiate on taking over this particular road. We had our engineers take a look at what it would take to get the road up to perfect standards from our perspective, and we came in with a cost estimate about eight hundred and fifty to eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars to bring that road completely back up to grade, where we think it needs to be for the foreseeable future. So, we approached Sunbeam and started having a conversation about how best to come to agreement on that. At the end of the day, what was proposed and what's before you is that we would take acceptance of this road. When we take acceptance of this road, they would deposit into a fund, into an escrow account, approximately eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, because we think that's what it's going to cost to bring everything up to standard. We would then, in 2000, fiscal year 2017, we're not doing it this year, because with all the construction traffic, we don't want to fix the road and then have it tore up again. So, we would go ahead and execute bids, we would go do the work, and draw from that eight hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars. We will know at the end of that then exactly how much money we needed, so if it comes short, then Sunbeam would come up with additional funds. If it's excess, so we have excess funds in that account, that money would go back to Sunbeam. The only thing that we would then do is basically say that forty-five percent of the actual costs used to bring that road up to our standards and repave and put new lighting and things of that nature, would be able to be recuperated by Sunbeam in road impact fee credits. Now, there's a contingency on those road impact fee credits, that if they don't use them within a certain period of time, and you can turn to the, let me see here, it's almost page five, it starts to decline over a period of time, so if the road impact fees are not fully used, that forty-five percent of whatever the dollar amount, we think it's about forty-five percent of eight hundred and fifty thousand, if that is not used in the first four years, then they start to reduce by five percent. They're not used in the first five years, it's reduced by ten percent, and then ultimately in year six, it reduces by fifteen percent. So if they don't use these road impact fee credits in that allotted time, by year six, they only have thirty percent of the value that they paid the city of Fishers to upgrade their road. And that's the basic tenet of this agreement. Now, there's some other things in there, like, Sunbeam is dedicating a considerable amount of right-of-way to the city in order to do these road projects that we're, that we're considering and currently under construction for. There's consideration here that allows them to do some additional landscaping, if they'd like, in the right-of-way, things of that nature. But the basic essence of this is a road relinquishment to the city of Fishers. They'll pay the full freight for what it takes to bring that up to a brand-new road, basically, and then we would give them a forty-five percent credit on whatever the cost of that improvement would be, and that would diminish over time if they don't use the credits. Any questions?
Questions? Do a motion approve. Go ahead, David.
I've got one quick question, man. Is this a four-lane in the future, or will it maintain a two-lane road?
It'll remain a two-lane.
Okay. Because I will tell you with some authority that it's a four-lane road right now.
It's a pretty wide road. There's, absolutely, but...
It is being used as a four-lane road.
Yeah. As of right now, it's planned to be a two-lane road.
Got a motion by David, second by Pete. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 19, request to approve a resolution to appropriate additional bridge impact fees.
Good evening, for the right curiouser, city controller. The resolution you have in front of you is a unique opportunity to use bridge impact fees that have been sitting on our cash balance unappropriated over a number of years at this point. With some of the development that we are going to be doing on 116 to add the additional lane over the overpass, it's an opportunity for us to use these funds that have just been sitting there unappropriated, as city officials has limited number of bridges. The request from my office is the approval of an additional appropriation for $194,000 that is sitting in our cash fund. There were no funds appropriated this year for this use, and the request is for this to be approved. This does require a public hearing, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Oscar?
Is there an intended use for this?
Yes. The specific use would be for the project we have going on 116th Street, that the bridge over I-69, adding an additional lane on there, that's where the, the money would go. So it'd be wrapped into that overall 116 project, but it'd be to rehab the 116th Street Bridge.
There's going to be sidewalks.
Yes, there, there is a sidewalk. There's a sidewalk on the north side of the bridge today. We're not going to touch that, but we're going to squeeze down the lanes, and we're going to be able to fit an additional lane without having to take the sidewalk out.
Ultimately, the use of the bridge impact fund would eliminate the use of any general fund or borrowing.
Motion to approve R-32116G.
Hold on, you guys need to conduct a public hearing first.
Forgot about that.
That's okay. This, at this point, if there are any further questions, open up for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward, please state your name for the record. Since there's no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. I'll take it.
Motion to stand.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item, item twenty, request to adopt ordinance establishing updated park impact fee rates.
All right, good evening. For the record, Tony Elliott with the Fishers Parks and Recreation Department. Tonight, before the city council, really, I'm happy to be here tonight. We've talked about this for some time. This is a request to begin updating, or the process to begin updating, the Parks Department's park impact fee. So the city's required every five years to update our park impact fee. We've worked with H.J. Umbon Associates over the past year or so to update our park impact fee plan. There are two main components to that plan. There's a zone improvement plan and the park impact fee plan. Tonight, what we're looking at specifically is the zone improvement plan. As we've gone through this process, we've met with the Builders Association of Greater Indianapolis. I think Kate Collins is back here as well from Baggy. So I'm just going to kind of walk through this process a little bit. In order to adopt the impact fee ordinance, the city council or the city has to adopt the zone improvement plan. The city amends the, the zone improvement plan to make adjustments in a number of things, the nature, the location, and cost of the infrastructure, and the timing and sequencing of infrastructure related to parks. A few components that you'll see, or that are part of the zone impact plan, or zone improvement plan, rather, that's included with your council packet, really a few different things here. Estimates related to the nature of park development, to the cost of different park amenities, the current levels of service that we provide, so for example, the number of trails or trail mileage per thousand residents, or the number of playgrounds per thousand residents, and then the projected levels of service that we want to achieve within the next five years. So as a five-year plan, we're projecting out five years, and what are those projected levels of service that we want to hit, and then what are the funding, what is the funding requirement needed to get to that point? So the zone improvement plan amendments become effective after the adoption and through the context and as part of the comprehensive plan. So tonight, the request for the city council is to hold first reading on this issue. The zone improvement will then go to Plan Commission in April at a public hearing in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, and then we would come back here in April for second and, and third reading. Once the zone improvement plan is adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, the city council will then be in position to formally adopt the park impact fee plan, really the whole ordinance that pertains to updating the park impact fee plan. So again, tonight's request is to hold first reading on the zone improvement plan. It's pretty complic, a little complex, there's a lot of information you all have, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but tonight, again, first reading, and it'll be the first step to updating that impact fee over the next couple of months.
Thank you. Any questions for Tony?
Tony, on the pickleball court, you only have 1.00 site. What is one site?
That's a good question. I think a site, as we defined in there, is probably four to six pickleball courts in there. We have four currently at Cynthia Park. I'd have to go back specifically and look to see what we considered as one site.
Okay, so you're not proposing any more pickleball courts for the entire city of Fishers?
Well, so this plan, this is the park impact fee plan, so what we put in here, so a couple of things. Number one, we've tried to keep what we are proposing in terms of levels of service consistent with what we've done historically. So what that means again is, so for example, our trail mileage, our trails mileage that we propose is one mile per 900 residents is our trail mileage. So that number, that overall mileage in trails increases as our population increases to keep that, that metric the same. So that's kind of the metric side of it. In terms of the funding for those, what we're looking at through this are just park impact fees. So we are saying that the park impact fees that we collect over the next five years, we are essentially putting in the plan that one pickleball site would be eligible for park impact fees. Now, that's not saying that we couldn't use other capital funds or operating funds to build pickleball courts, but for the purposes of the plan, and the purpose is to be somewhat conservative on that impact fee, we are pledging only one pickleball site funded by park impact fees.
Okay, so you could expand that to eight or 12 or something, because from what I'm hearing, we're getting statewide and central United States recognition for those, and in talking, I got texted an hour before, that there's a possibility this could become national pickleball tournaments.
Sure.
In the city of Fishers, so it, it's getting very recognized, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure you'll need some more pickleball courts out there.
Sure.
The other thing I noticed is missing is no bocce courts.
Yeah, we didn't include bocce courts in here. There were a number of amenities that we discussed, again, through the context of the comprehensive plan, through a survey that we did with the public, skate parks, bocce ball courts, any number of different amenities, but the, the core amenities that we have in here are your basics, your baseball fields, your soccer fields, football fields, trails, playgrounds, and those core items. Again, that doesn't limit us from doing those things in the future, but for the purposes of the park impact fee plan, we decided to, to keep those out.
Tony, I was glad to hear that Baggy was involved in working through this, but can you also, for the record, just identify what some of the other surrounding communities have for their impact fees, just as a comparison?
Yeah, I'll bring those specifics to, to the future meetings. Once we get into the park impact fee, the figures specifically, I'll bring those comparisons. The surrounding area communities, I think on the high end, Carmel is around $2,000 is their, their most up-to-date park impact fee, but I'll bring all those details to the future meetings. Tonight, really just wanted to request, this first reading is the first step to get this going. Again, the requirement of, of approving the, the zone improvement plan before we can improve, or approve, rather, the, the full park impact fee plan.
And just as a, as a note here, so everybody understands, because Rich and I sit currently on the, and I think Selena too, on, on the planning commission, the rest of the council members can come sit in the audience and hear everything that's going to go on, because there'll be typically a lot more detail that goes on at those planning commission meetings, right, with, with a lot of stuff going on. So again, it's, it is just first reading.
Well, and I, and I would reiterate too, that when Tony or any of our staff brings something back from Plan Commission, you can envision a much more detailed.
Right.
Conversation, so, yeah.
Do a motion have first reading?
I have one more question. Tony, I also, on the list here, I didn't see anything like for the future planning, possibly of ADA, any ADA playground equipment or anything like that. Is that, will that be considered later, or?
Yeah, so, that's a good question. So in terms of the specific type of equipment or the way that we achieve these goals set out by the park impact fee plan, those specifics really are guided in many ways by the comprehensive plan and the parks and open space plan through the comprehensive plan. So as we set up a ratio for playgrounds per thousand residents, for example, we may say that over the next five years, we need three more playgrounds, especially in areas where the community is developing, so say out toward the east part of the community. As we dive into that, this plan doesn't tell us exactly what type of playground that we need, but the, the feedback that we got from the public, the inventory that we did on all of our amenities, that'll really guide us, and so it'll help us make decisions in the future. Do we need an ADA playground, or what type of amenity specifically do we need?
Have first reading.
We've had first reading. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Looks like agenda item 21 has been pulled.
That's correct.
Moving on to item 22, request to approve an ordinance approving a lease between Fishers Redevelopment Authority and the Fishers Redevelopment Commission regarding various road improvements.
Again, Oscar Gutierrez, city controller, for the record. This request is to approve an ordinance approving a lease between the Fishers Redevelopment Authority and the Fishers Redevelopment Commission with the city council. The Fishers Redevelopment Authority intends to issue one or more issue, series of bonds in the maximum principal of $12 million to finance the acquisition and construction of all or any portion improvements to the 116 thoroughfare between Commercial Drive and Cumberland Road, including land acquisition, new pavement constructions, storms, storm sewage, sidewalks, multi-use paths, traffic signals, and all other associated improvements to 116 and Oak Drive. This is more commonly referred to as the improvements for the IKEA project. This is a statute requirement for this body to approve a lease with the Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority will then hold a public hearing, I believe, next week in order to issue the actual bonds. Then another step will be to, for this body to accept the exchange of the actual property.
Can we, can we do the first, second, and third reading? Did you say we needed to have a public hearing next, when?
I believe.
The public hearing will be held at the RDC.
I believe the lease was already approved by the RDC, so you can go ahead.
We can, we can suspend the rules.
Okay, very good. So we don't need a public hearing?
You do not.
Okay.
Any questions for Oscar?
Motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 032116F.
Motion by Pete, second by Todd. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do a motion approved.
So moved.
Motion by Pete, second by Selena. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to other unfinished and new business. Item 23, request to approve amendment to meeting minutes for 12/21/15 for State Road